Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our hearing for a liquor license transfer. We have the Three Rivers Beer. Is there anything that you would want to read?
I can read that, yep. One second here. And this is an application received by Three Rivers Beer LLC, who has requested approval of the City of York for the proposed transfer of PA Restaurant Liquor License Number R-17394 from Brickyard Tavern, Inc., 748 South Albemarle Street, Spring Garden Township, to Three Rivers Beer LLC for a restaurant facility within the City of York to be located at 131 through 139 North Duke Street, Suite 4, City of York, with the understanding that the liquor license will be transferred to only that location.
Is there anyone here from Three Rivers Beer?
Yes, my name is Greg Zohar. I represent Three Rivers Beer. Prior to the hearing, I had passed out what I'd like to have marked is applicant's Exhibit A. It's the proposed floor plan for the build-out of the premises. And I know the council has a busy agenda tonight, so I'm going to keep my remarks brief. But I would like to have marked as Exhibit B my presentation, which I provided a copy to the court reporter.
Very good, thank you.
We're here tonight to request the intermissible transfer of a liquor license into the City of York for use at Three Rivers Beer new location located down on Duke Street. Three Rivers Beer is owned by Shalom Sabog. He currently has two operating locations, one in the city of Pittsburgh, the other one in the city of Philadelphia. He's been currently approved for five other locations, located both in Allegheny County and in Montgomery County, as well as the city of Philadelphia. And he has three applications that are currently pending. Three Rivers Beer will be providing prepackaged meals, sandwiches, ramen noodles, salads, and it'll be offering beer for both on-premises, off-premises, and for take-home delivery. The take-home delivery will be supplied by a third-party transporter-for-hire company, which they're entered into a contract to utilize. All of Three Rivers Beer employees will be ramp-trained, and the establishment itself will become ramp-certified, including the licensed manager. They plan on hiring four full-time employees in addition to the licensed manager, who will devote her full-time attention to the licensed business. If council has any questions, I'll be more than happy to, you know, to answer them.
Could you be a little bit more specific about where this is? I mean, I know where it is, but for the public?
Oh, it's located down on 131-139 North Duke Street. Sweet, it's going to be Suite 4 down there.
Is that the shopping center?
Yes.
And is that where, is this particular spot where there was a bar before?
No, there wasn't a bar there before. I actually believe, I don't know if there was a dance studio. There was another business. It may have been a beauty salon that was in there. That space is actually being split. I know that there's going to basically be parking in the park, they have parking lot parking down there, as well as any off-street parking, if that's available pursuant to city ordinances.
Any other questions from council? Is there any question from the public on this matter? Or comment? Hearing none, thank you very much.
If we could just put on the record that the public hearing was properly advertised?
Duly noted, thank you. And that will conclude the hearing for the transfer of the liquor license, which will be considered a little bit later on during our legislative session. Next, we'll go into public comment on anything that is not on the agenda. And we have several people signed up. Mr. Oatman, you're first. But I believe you wanted to discuss something about the budget. I'm sorry? This is for the budget, so you'll be able to speak later. Mr. Billot? Okay, very good. And Ms. Seaton?
Good evening, City Council. I'm Stephanie Seaton, York City resident, also chairperson for the City of York Human Relations Commission. I just wanted to briefly talk about the housing crisis that is still currently going on. And I don't know, want to inform people, CPC, Community Progress Council, put out an email that their funds are limited now, and they're scaling back those whom they are able to serve. If you've gotten help in the past with an eviction, you know they're addressing those who are currently being evicted. So they've done a really good job based with the overwhelming response they got for help. So I just want to let people know, you can contact the City of York's Human Relation Commission. We have seen cases and examples of evictions being discriminatory. So it's not always about the inability to pay. But if I can't pay and you can't pay, why am I getting evicted and you're not? So we look at other causes, but also serve as a resource to try to refer individuals accessing our services so that they can get the help that they need. So we just want to let the residents in the City of York know, if you are having issues concerning housing, be it eviction, maybe a discriminatory action, please contact the City of York's Human Relations Commission. And the same goes, of course, for any type of employment activity or public accommodation, lack of accessibility issues within the City of York. We're concerned about that. So please contact us. Our number is 717-846-2926. Thank you for your time. Have a wonderful holiday.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Were you waving, or would you like to speak?
Oh, I was waving.
Okay.
Oh, somebody's waving? What?
Very good.
Oh, you want us to, what, cut the microphones? Oh, you want him to adjourn? I mean, what, he did, he did adjourn?
Was it that we were finished?
Oh, we're done?
Oh, yes, we are finished, yes.
I didn't understand that, you know, that meant to take somebody's head off, and you know, in my world. So, okay.
Well, thank you for being here, and you have a good holiday. Okay.
Thank you, Byron.
So, public comment section is now closed, and we will open up the December 21 legislative session of York City Council. Would you please call the roll?
Rivera?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
Ritter Dixon?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Nixon?
Here. And now, if you are able, please rise for the pledge and a moment of silence afterwards.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. We need to approve the minutes of November 16th and November 30th. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as distributed from November 16 and November 30, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There will be the traditional swearing-in of new council members and the reorganization meeting on January 4th at 6:00 here in council chambers. Now we'll enter into, I have too many agendas here. Resolution authorizing the release of financial security funds. Number one. Oh, that's the liquor license, I'm sorry. Approval of the liquor license that we just discussed.
So introduced.
Is there a motion to introduce by short title?
So, somewhere.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Resolution Number 130, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon, a resolution of the City of York, County of York, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, approving the transfer of Restaurant Liquor License Number R-17394 into the City of York.
Move to approve.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion by council?
None.
Anything from the public on this item? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes, and that is so ordered. Next, we have Resolution Number 131.
So introduced.
Resolution Number 131, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon, a resolution, I'm sorry, whereas the Timberill LLC has requested release of public improvement security funds associated with the York family residence, State Street Crossing, land development plan, located at 300 North State Street, and where the bond was received, and where the council approved the associated land development plan, and where the request for the remaining amount of $675,570.50 has been reviewed, now therefore be resolved. Council hereby authorize the release of said funds.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion by council?
No.
Anything from the public on this item? Please call the roll.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes, and that is so ordered. Next, we have Resolution Number 132.
So introduced.
Resolution Number 132, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon, whereas Warehouse has submitted a preliminary final subdivision plan for 320 North George Street, and whereas the city's officers have examined the plan and have recommended conditional approval, and whereas the plan is in accordance with the city's ordinances, and whereas the planning commission recommended conditional approval at its meeting of December 13th with various waivers, now therefore be it resolved. Council hereby approve said plan.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion by council?
None.
Anything from the public? Please call the roll.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. Motion carries. Next, we have Resolution Number 133.
So introduced.
Resolution Number 133, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon, whereas Site Design Concepts, on behalf of York County History Center, has submitted a preliminary final subdivision plan for 121 North Pershing Avenue, and whereas the city's officers have reviewed and recommended approval of the plan, and whereas the plan is in accordance with the city's ordinances, and whereas the planning commission recommended conditional approval with various waivers, now therefore be it resolved. Said plan is hereby approved.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
None.
Anything from the public? Please call the roll.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker? Yeah, Nixon?
Yes, and that is so ordered. Next is Resolution Number 135.
So introduced.
No, I'm sorry.
Wait, does it mean? No, we're 135.
Is this just Site Design Concepts?
Yes.
Land development?
It's Harv.
No, we're missing.
No? 135.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We just approved the resolution for the subdivision plan. Right, Mike?
Yep, 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 yep. That's right.
Yeah, 134, Resolution 134. Does that introduce, Councilman?
Yes.
Resolution Number 134, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon, whereas Site Design Concepts, on behalf of the York County History Center, has submitted a preliminary final land development plan for 121 North Pershing Avenue, and whereas the city's officers have recommended approval, conditional approval of the plan, and whereas the plan is in accordance with the city's ordinances, and whereas the planning commission recommended conditional approval with various waivers, now therefore be it resolved. Said plan is hereby approved.
Move, move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments?
None.
None.
Anything from the public? Please call the roll.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Now we have Resolution Number 134.
So introduced.
Resolution Number 135, introduced by...
135. I swear.
Be it resolved, that council hereby approves the certificate of appropriateness to be forwarded for work approved by Harv, and the application filed by RSDC for work at 46 West Pences Street, Noel Galvez for work at 165 South Pine Street, and Tassby and James Atkins for work at 349 West Philadelphia Street.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none. Anything from the public? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes, and that is so ordered. Now we have new business, and this would be Resolution Number 136.
So introduced.
Resolution 136, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon. Be it resolved by the council, that council hereby consents to the following: Appointment made by the mayor of Lauren Days as a member of the York Business Improvement District Authority to expire January 1st, 2027. Appointment of Billia Cabon as a member of the York Business Improvement District Authority to serve until January 1st, 2027. Reappointment of Kimberly Lentz as a member of the York City General Authority to serve until January 1st, 2027. Reappointment of Michael Connor as a member of the York City Sewer Authority Board to serve until January 1st, 2027. Reappointment of Christopher Velez as a member of the York City Planning Commission, which term shall expire January 1st, 2026. Reappointment of Mark Skian as a member of Harv, which term shall expire 1st Monday of January 2027. Reappointment of Mark Schermeyer as a member of Harv, which term shall expire the 1st Monday of January 2027. And reappointment of Nicholas Holman IV as a member of the zoning hearing board to serve until January 1st, 2027.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? Are any of these individuals in the room? I don't see any. So are there any comments from the public on this item?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm still Franklin Williams, 528 West Market Street. And right now, honored to chair the zoning hearing board. I would just like to tell you a little bit about Nicholas Holman, who has been with us, I think, for going on a year. And when he came to us, he had a resume about this long. He's a retired naval officer. He has served all over the world. And I was almost afraid to meet him. I thought, wow, he's overqualified. He's one of the nicest people I've ever met. He and his wife treasured their historic home on East Market Street. I'm not sure, they only moved to York, I think, three or four years or so ago. But they are definite assets to our community, and he is a definite asset to the zoning hearing board. And I just wanted to tell you all that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Please call the roll.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. That is so ordered. Next, we would have Resolution 137.
So introduced.
Resolution Number 137, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon. Be it resolved, that council hereby appoints Lisa Welty from an alternate member of the York City Civil Service Board to a regular member to fill the unexpired term of Joseph Stein, which term shall expire the 1st Monday of January 2025.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments?
None.
Anything from the public? Please call the roll.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
No. Next, we have Resolution Number 138.
So introduced. Just give me one second to catch up here. All right, Resolution Number 138. Is there a motion to introduce by short title?
Motion?
Second.
Is there a second? Okay, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Resolution Number 138, introduced by Queen of Washington, a resolution of the city authorizing the submission of a proposal for funding an amount of $78,000 with the assistance for firefighters grant with a 10% match of $7,800 for purchase of ballistic vests for the protection of firefighters.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments, Ms. Washington?
None.
Anything from the public? Please call the roll.
Washington, no, I'm sorry, Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes, and that's so ordered. Next, we have Resolution 139.
So introduced.
Resolution Number 139, introduced by Judy Ritter Dixon, whereas the Department of Economic and Community Development, Bureau of Health, is requesting a transfer in the 2021 budget in the amount of $4,650 due to the budget revision of the federal funds that need to be spent by December 31st, 2021. Now therefore be it resolved. Council hereby approves transfer of said funds.
Move to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments? Anything from the public? Please call the roll.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes, motion carries. Next, we have Resolution 140.
So introduced.
Resolution Number 140, introduced by Sandy Walker. Whereas the city has elected to participate in the recovery program to Act 205 of 1984, and whereas with the assistance of Conrad Segal, the minimum municipal obligations for 2022's firemen's pension fund, police pension fund, and officers' employment fund were calculated. Now therefore be it resolved. Council hereby approves the firefighters' pension fund, MMO, at $4,096,200. Pension, police pension fund at $4,331,288. And officers' employment retirement fund,
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes, that is so ordered. Next, we have Resolution 141.
So introduced.
Resolution Number 141, council hereby adopts the schedule and notice of meetings for the year 2022. A copy will be permanently posted on the bulletin board at City Hall.
Move to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments?
None.
Anything from the public? Please call the roll.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. Next, we have part of the amended agenda, which is Resolution Number 142.
So introduced.
Resolution Number 142, introduced by Queen of Washington, whereas the York City Police Department has a vacancy for the position of probationary police officer, and whereas the civil service board eligibility list reflects the following: Individual is eligible for appointment as a probationary officer, that being Michael Davidson, and whereas various conditions must be met prior to the appointment. Now therefore be it resolved. Council hereby authorize the appointment of Michael Davidson.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments?
None.
Anything from the public on this item? Please call the roll.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. Is Mr. Davidson in the room? Very well. Supplemental agenda. We need a motion to waive Rule Number 215.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Very good. This is Resolution 143.
So introduced.
Resolution Number 143, introduced by Lou Rivera. Now therefore be it resolved, that council hereby extends the declaration of disaster emergency[1547.24] council hereby extends the declaration of disaster emergency for the City of York until January 31, 2022.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? Anything from the public? Please call the roll.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. Next is Resolution 144.
So introduced.
Resolution Number 144, introduced by Sandy Walker. And Resolution Amendment Bill 60 of 2021, the City of York 2022 budget to change the amount of the awarded American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 ARPA expenditures from $6,468,725 to $197,726. Whereas the City of York was awarded $17.1 million in 2021 through the ARPA, and whereas the administration's 2022 proposed York City budget submitted to City Council on November 30 included expenditures of $6,468,725 of the awarded ARPA funds, and where City Council wishes to change the amount of the awarded expenditures in the 2022 City of York budget from $6,468,725 to $197,726 by reducing the expenditures to the attached line items as detailed in Exhibit A1, which is attached to the resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of York that the 2022 City of York budget, Bill Number 60 of 2021, shall be amended as described in Exhibit A1, which is attached here to and made apart hereof.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Okay. Any public comment on this item?
I'm still Franklin Williams, 528 West Market Street. I don't know why you didn't just rip the whole thing out. I'm curious what the $193,000 is going to do. I'm curious what the special item that somehow survived might be. In the joint declaration that you sent to five or 600 of your closest friends and admirers a week or two ago, you started off with one of the most distressing and discouraging things in the whole piece, and that was criticizing the mayor for politicizing the last death of a young York boy from gun violence. Now, I'd say how Republican, but I don't think all Republicans are that bad. But where in the world did you get that idea? I guess because every time there's a mass shooting and some good people called for more gun safety measures, they're accused of politicizing the deaths, and they're told it's a terrible thing to do. Well, I think it's the right time to think about the high cost of gun violence. What better time? And the same with the death of the York boy. What better time to think about the high cost of gun violence? You know, you just approved a resolution appointing and reappointing seven or eight or nine people willing to volunteer on various boards and authorities. The only thing that was missing was the usual compliment or commendation often from you, Mr. President, thanking citizens for volunteering, for participating, which... I wrote down a few excerpts from your joint statement. "The residents of the City of York deserve this process to be handled in a way that builds trust with them." That sounds a bit like the survey, the widely distributed and collected survey of public opinion about what they thought we should concentrate on. "We need to slow down the spending and speed up the planning process." Slow down the spending. People are dying now. I lost my garage and vehicle about two and a half weeks ago because there are homeless people now living under bridges and in parks, and I thought there was something I could do to help one of them, maybe only one. And for about a year, it went very well. And then early on the morning of Friday, December 3, it suddenly went very badly. Thank goodness, neither he nor anyone else was seriously hurt. I could say if I had it to do over again, I would, or if I had it to do over again, I wouldn't, but I don't have it to do over again. My garage is gone. Because I thought I could see something that I could do when the need was there. I think you all need a reality check. You know, the homeless situation is real. The guns that our children are using to kill each other are real. The bullets in them are real, and the problem is now. My thanks to the 10 or 12 diverse members who served on the review committee, using a very serious review process, and ended up giving us recommendations that I think were well-considered, thoughtful, and really, you know, the whole process resembles most of the good things, and there were a few, in your joint statement. Which leads us to wonder. Was it the review process that you didn't like?
I don't know how to stop it. I'm sorry. I don't know how to stop it.
Or was it the fact that it was led by the mayor? It looks to me like the latter, and I'm very dismayed, very dismayed.
Thank you, sir. Was there anyone else?
Thank you, Franklin. I appreciate your comments, and I do appreciate each and every one of you. I...
I'm sorry, could you identify yourself?
I'm sorry?
Your name, please.
I'm sorry. Kenneth Oatman.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Kenneth Oatman?
Kenneth Oatman.
451 West Market Street, York City. You devote your time and energy to this, and your professionalism is quite outstanding. I'm not quite educated in the protocol of City Council. I've been to a few meetings, but probably not enough. But at any rate, I appreciate the fact that people such as yourselves do devote your time and energy to this, as well as the mayor and other public officials and servants that we have here. I too, like Franklin, have some issues with the rejection of the budget in Toto, pretty much. There were several projects on the agenda, as I understand. One, the Penn Market project. The other one, a mentoring situation where young people interested in joining law enforcement or criminal law could work with the police department as young people and be mentored into that. The other one was the ambassador program, which I really like, to try to get people off the street, not just by hauling them out and dumping them at the city limits or chasing them out of town, and not by subsidizing a life of drug use, but by putting people, actually human beings, in contact with them to help them find the services and the places where they can actually go for help, and to be there as someone that can be a sounding board or to help lead them in the right direction. If we don't get a handle on this homeless situation, we're going to be a little San Francisco or a little Los Angeles, which is, if you've been reading the news of late, there's quite ill effects happening in those places because of their past handling of how they treat the homeless and the drug addicts with the open-air drug markets and so forth there. So I would just encourage you, I mean, there are so many things in this budget that are so good, I don't know how you could just strike it all out without coming up with, without having alternate suggestions or that we can use these funds for good. This is a rare opportunity that we have in York City to have such a pool of funds. I appreciate the fact that you don't want to waste it. It's not to be thrown away. It's to be taken care of. We need to be good stewards of that money. It's not going to come at us again in the near future, I'm pretty sure. So we do need to take care of it and be good stewards of it. But we need to do some things right now, as we've just heard from Franklin, that can really help change people's lives. We've got quality of life issues in this city that need to be dealt with, from trash on the streets to people sleeping in the streets to people hanging out in the park all night, drinking, drugging, and things like this that we need to quell. We need to come up with ideas and ways of dealing with it. And if it's putting a mentor group on the street, adding them to the police department, not with billy clubs and guns, but with the people that care about the citizens of York. So there are so many good things here. I mean, there's a million and a half dollars for that program alone. So we end up whittling it down from a six-plus-million-dollar proposal to $197,000. I'd have to study it to see exactly what you did get done.
Is there anyone else? I believe there was another person.
Good evening. Michael Helfrich, 430 Cookus House Lane. I would just like to state that this is not a change in the budget. This is a complete elimination of a strategy to deal with the problems here in the City of York. So this is not a matter of numbers. This is eliminating, as Mr. Oatman described, the credible messenger program where we have young people or people that have been in the streets go out and try to talk to those that are in the streets now committing the violence in the city and working with them to let them know that people care about them and there are other resources to redirect them from the violence. This isn't just for them. This is for every person of the City of York, plus adding three additional police officers to GVI. The GVI unit has taken nearly 50% of the guns off the street that we've taken off this year, over 150 guns with, that's a record number of guns that these folks have taken off of the streets. This is the police, that's a million dollars right there, invested in the city. Police co-responder initiative, $300,000. That is for mental health assistants or mental health specialists to go out. So we do not have unintended consequences when our police officers are dealing with people that have mental health issues. We'll send a professional out there to make sure that things do not happen the way we've seen them happen in the past here in York and across the country, where individuals that needed mental health help ended up either wounded or dead because of a situation involving police department. It includes $450,000 for the police cadet program, a pipeline for young people from the City of York to become police officers here in the City of York. It includes ShotSpotter Trauma Informed Care, where we would use the knowledge of where shots are being fired to deploy mental health specialists to go and talk with the young people and the families who are suffering from immediate trauma because there were gunshots in their neighborhoods. Whether anybody was hit or not, they're suffering from trauma for that. It includes an unmanned aircraft system known as a drone to try and help locate lost individuals, to try and help track down the dirt bike folks that we, you know, have had an issue with, and we can't harm them or harm others by chasing them around the city, but what we can do is track them and find out what's going on with them and try and get them off the streets that way. It includes $220,000 for the SACA York Community Resource Center to provide job training for individuals. It includes another $80,000 to provide jobs through the TechRev Center, TechRev York. It includes $200,000 for coordinated street outreach, as was mentioned, to connect homeless people with individuals that will help them and meet with them and try and work on their needs. This is all, almost everything we're talking about is directly connecting with the people that need our help. This is the money that they're cutting out of the budget right now we're proposing to. Money for Bell Family Shelter to increase their capacity. Money for LifePath to increase their capacity. Money for advocacy and case management programs to help keep people from becoming homeless. $25,000 for the Salvation Army to have a mobile unit to be able to go and help homeless people with hot meals and hot drinks when it's cold. $125,000 for those returning from incarceration. If we don't help those that are returning from incarceration, they again become a problem for the entire community. $75,000 for Spanish-speaking assistance for young, for children who have been abused. $125,000 for trauma individuals at the emergency room at York Hospital. $15,000 for assistance to reach those that speak Spanish and may not be connected with all of the services that others are providing. Food equity, $100,000. We talk about food deserts and go on and on. This is not about, this is not about money, and I don't know if it's about something between me and council, but what you're doing is affecting the people of the City of York. It's not affecting me. Maybe some indirectly, but I'm not immediately in need of any of these services. People of the city are in need, and they've been in need for four years while I've tried to scrape nickels and dimes together to try and help people, and now we have the money, and you're talking about, well, why don't we just wait a little bit? This process has not only taken eight months and has incorporated many individuals, whether it's local folks in the survey, 590 citizens, or whether it's the 11 other individuals that we had on the advisory group, we have incorporated individuals into this process, and now it is being used as an example. Our process is being used as an example. I believe the Vice President received a call where a person who is working on this issue nationally, they're using our process as an example for other communities, and here we are. You haven't received that call?
Phone calls, no.
Okay.
I have not received any phone calls.
I was told that you received the communication.
No, I haven't.
Well, do we want to wrap this up?
I have wrapped it up for now. Thank you.
Is there any other comment from anyone in the public? Ms. Seaton?
Good evening. Stephanie Seaton, York City resident. One of the common things that I've heard tonight is that the time is now. People are in need now. To have the amount of money that we've been allocated, and we didn't attempt to allocate it all in this budget, but I guess it was $6,400,000, $6,000 and some dollars, and to take that down to $197,000, I haven't really heard why, so I guess that's one of the questions I would have would be why. Can I ask why?
This is not a discussion. If you'd like to make a comment, please go ahead.
Okay. So, no answer as to why this budget would be cut with all these dollars, with all the need that is going on. And again, the theme that I've heard is that the time is now, and I don't need to hear two or three other people in this room to say that the time is now. All I have to do is walk outside that door, because I see hungry people every day. I don't know if y'all are walking around in this community or driving around into it, and I know most of you, so you probably are. So you see the need as well. You see the violence. You see the hunger. You see the homelessness. You see the lack of resources. And to have the ability to address that and say, let's do it later, I think is irresponsible. Because somebody's hungry right now. Somebody's homeless and under a bridge right now. Somebody has an illegal gun trying to commit a crime right now. Somebody's needing mental health services right now. And our nonprofit community have been stretched to the limits to address these concerns, and even our philanthropic community have given to a lot of nonprofits to help address these needs. But this is what this money is intended for. There's a list outlining the type of activities. I've administered federal grants. They tell you what you can and cannot utilize the funds for. So you have some guidelines. I know I took the survey when it came out. I participated as a citizen to work together with my city council people, with the administration, and with those who are in need, and I did my best to answer those questions. So I just don't, I think it's, again, irresponsible to withhold those funds when there's a need that we can be addressing. And it's people who are addressing them now, but resources are running out. Just, SCPC just put out an email two days ago saying the money that they have to help with evictions, that's almost gone, and that they're going to be turning people away that they can't help anymore. So I think if we have the ability to help those in need and we have the funding, I don't, what better time is it? What better time? Oh, yeah, I can't ask questions. So I withdraw that question, but I'll tell you, the time is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish us to speak? Go ahead.
Mr. Chair.
Would you like to identify yourself, please?
Manuel Gomez, city resident. Mr. Chair, I respect all of the speakers. It's a little difficult for me to say what I'm going to say here at this time. I'm neither here nor there. I've seen a lot of the rumors, conjecture, all kinds of discussion that has been occurring informally. All I have to say today is, in spirit, I'm with council when it comes to council being a deliberative body, council being a body that acts upon its procedures with intent. I see that what you're doing is intentful. I do wish that there was more forthcoming feedback as to why you're taking the actions you're taking, and I simply do not agree with the almost tacit and implicit admonishment of council for not being a rubber stamp. I've never been for council being a rubber stamp. Transparency would be much, much, much more welcome in the process, but there's nothing wrong with council having its own separate policy direction and should never be chastised or castigated for it. Many people are in agreement with the mayor. I'm in agreement with the mayor on many things. But you have to consider that at some point, for lack of a better term, the other side will be in office, and then you will then too wish that you had a council that served as a check and a balance against some policies or procedures or methods and ways that you're not all too in agreement with. So I respect that council is deliberating and being judicious in the allocation of these funds. I'm not going to belabor the process. There's much that can be said, but in spirit, I respect the process. I'll just leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the amendment? Hearing none. Hearing none. Ms. Walker, would you like to make some comments?
Yes. Thank you all for your input. What I envision for the city of York is an unbiased and resilient recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic. The American Rescue Plan Act is a critical resource made available to help us make this a reality. Since the pandemic, York County has seen over 78,000 coronavirus cases and over 1,000 deaths. Additionally, we have seen widespread economic losses across multiple sectors, with job loss at an all-time high during the height of this pandemic. Working families with school-aged children have been profoundly affected by the disruption to in-person public schooling, and the impacts of these losses have disproportionately impacted low-income families and communities of color. Mayor Helfrich has boasted about a survey he spearheaded with York City residents on how ARPA funds should be spent. He stated that nearly 600 residents responded, and they provided a survey with over 95% confidence, and this reflects the will of York City residents. With over 44,000 residents, half of them being adults, about living in the city of York, how can you feel confident that 600 responses represent the will of our community? What this represents to me is that we need to do more outreach and offer more public engagement opportunities. For example, the city of Lancaster, in the month of September and October, had over eight outreach engagement opportunities on top of their community engagement survey. I'm not against Mayor Helfrich's recommendations, but I do question the process and autonomy. This has been my unwavering stance from the very beginning. We have aging buildings, emergency vehicles needing to be replaced or repaired, and failing businesses. I am extremely frustrated by the speed of this process being forced upon us, especially as this is council's final meeting of the year. Mayor Helfrich has shoved these numbers down our throats without any formal plan. I'm not in favor of giving blanket allocations for services that are unfamiliar and detailed. This is a once-in-a-generation opportunity for us to bounce back from years of solid decline. I believe it is imperative that we hire an outside neutral consultant to help us with this process to ensure equitable and proper distribution of funds and services. Also, I question whether a bidding mechanism should be included in requests for proposals for services when expending ARPA funding. We want to maximize our pocketbook, and this may be an appropriate approach to help us do that. I also think there may be opportunities for us to partner with the county on some things and also partner with the school district and maybe create a collaborative roadmap of services. We need to work together to maximize this funding to make a bigger impact on our community. We live in this community, we work in this community, and some of us have children in this community, grandchildren and great-grandchildren in this community. We know the problems that exist in this community. I deal with them on a daily basis, seven days a week. There has been a misconceived perception that counsel wants ARPA funds to just quote-unquote "sit in the bank." This perception or accusation is simply not true. While we appreciate the work that has been done so far, we also understand that this is a once-in-a-generation investment opportunity, and we must invest wisely. We must work together and take very deliberate and decisive steps to support transformative programs and projects that will have an immense and sustainable impact on our community. We accomplish this by creating a timeline, a roadmap, a strategic plan that can clearly be understood by the citizens of York City. I also think there may be opportunities for us to partner with the county, the school district, as well as other nonprofits and for-profit businesses. I would like to see a community engagement campaign initiated to understand how the city of York can best close all of these gaps and address these problems. We need to hear from you, and most of all, we need a solid, impartial, detailed plan that will serve the needs of the city of York and its residents. As elected officials, it is our job to work together to make the best decisions for the city of York. We stand as city council willing and ready to make sure that this funding is utilized in the most efficient and effective way possible. Thank you.
Any other comments by counsel? I just would wish to add my echo to Ms. Walker's statement, and I hope that the next counsel is very wise in dispersing these funds to the best of the future of York. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Rivera.
I will have to abstain.
Reason for abstention?
My organization is one of the organizations receiving funds.
Well, this is not an amendment that has anything to do with the funds. It is simply eliminating those funds.
Yeah, but my understanding, Council President, is that Councilman Rivera's salary could partially be paid by these funds if they were approved, so that's why he wouldn't be able to, he wouldn't be able to vote yea.
Well, I understand that, but his, we amended it to eliminate. That's what the amendment says.
Yeah, but if he were to vote against the amendment, then he's voting for his salary.
Counsel, all those in favor of allowing Mr. Rivera to abstain, say yes.
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 Okay.
Continue the roll.
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. And motion carries. Next, we have final passage of Bill Number 60.
Introduced.
This is, what I'm going to introduce now is the Bill Number 60 as amended by Resolution Number 144, which was just approved.
Correct.
By counsel, okay? So this is an ordinance, Bill Number 60, introduced by Sandy Walker at the November 30th meeting. An ordinance appropriating sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the city government here and after set forth during the year 2022 prohibiting certain transfers, providing for payment of bills contracted before in prior years, providing for distribution of items in the form of an analysis of various proposed items of revenue and expenditure consistent with the optional charter plan of the city of York, providing for certification thereof to the Pennsylvania Department of Economic and Community Development, providing for the severability of the provisions thereof, repealing inconsistent ordinances and providing for the effective date thereof. And with the amendment of Resolution Number 144, that would change Section 18 of Bill 60, and it's adopting the American Rescue Plan Act budget for fiscal year 2022 with the appropriations totaling, it is now 1,900, I'm sorry, $197,726 as detailed in Exhibit A and as amended by Resolution Number 144 of 2021, which will be attached to this ordinance.
And then counsel will still have to vote to adopt the line item changes that were in the resolution, because the resolution that was just voted on can't change the ordinance. So if counsel wants to change the ordinance, they have to adopt, we can call it, ARPA expenditures as detailed in Exhibit A1 in Resolution 15, or Resolution, whatever resolution you just Because the resolution doesn't, on its own, can't do anything to the ordinance that was already introduced. Counsel has to do that separately.
We should do that prior to voting on the budget?
Correct.
Motion to.
Are you, want to give that motion, Ms. Walker?
I need the exact word. Motion to adopt.
You want to change the line item, so to adopt the exhibit A1 from Resolution Number, what was the last resolution?
144.
144. From 144 to amend Bill Number 60 in accordance with the resolution.
Your monoline. Can you repeat it? Because I... The motion made by Walker to adopt Exhibit A1 of Resolution Number 144 to amend Bill 60 in accordance with the, and then you kind of fell off.
Oh, in accordance with Resolution 144.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those, should we do a roll? Yes.
Yes.
Can I just say something?
Sure, of course.
There was a question in regards to what the 197,000 would go towards, and that's towards the Human Relations Commission for full-time positions and some of the work that we already approved in the 2021 budget, and we wanted to make sure that they were able to continue the mission in that particular department. You said that was 197,000?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we'll do the vote on the amendment. And Rivera?
I will have to abstain.
Same reason as before?
Yes.
And counsel in favor of abstention, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Okay. And this is just for the amendment, Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. Motion carries.
So, the next will be...
Final passage.
As amended.
As amended, final passage of Bill Number 60.
Introduced.
Well, we already introduced it.
Sorry, move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Okay, please call a roll on this. Did you want to make another comment?
Sir, please, sir. Public, is it time for a public comment?
Yes.
I guess I'm curious, Michael Helfrich, 430 Cuckis House Lane. I'm curious, the city of York has had 20 comprehensive planning meetings since ARPA was announced. All of the recommendations also reflect the goals and strategies within the comprehensive plan. Again, we had a survey, we had an advisory group made up of our citizens, elected officials, and others. We have been working since before the passage of this bill on March 12th of 2021. We've been working for over nine months on this, and I've heard some criticisms from council members, but I haven't heard one thing that council has done. What has council done? What has council done? You have had public hearings yourselves in the past when you had questions about things, when you had questions about residency two years ago, residency. You had a public hearing or you had a public meeting because you wanted to get public input, and even though the public input said that we should get rid of residency, this council still hasn't acted for two years on residency, leaving our Health Bureau, our wastewater treatment plant, our finance department, all shorthanded. But you did have a public meeting, and I give you credit for that. But here you sit, and what have you done? You had every opportunity for the last nine months to have public hearings if you didn't think I was doing enough. We've had people out there, we had 10 meetings in the parks, in the communities, we've had 10 other meetings on the comprehensive plan. There is nothing you can tell me that we haven't done from our side. So if you wanted more done, why didn't you do it? You had all of this time. I'm flabbergasted at the comments that I'm hearing. You're not letting it sit in the bank. Damn right you're letting it sit in the bank.
I'm not going to...
I've got my time.
Put that comment.
I've got my time.
I'm not going to be disrespected either.
As someone who has disrespected me multiple times.
I have not disrespected.
Oh. I will continue.
We will not have an argument here.
You are removing funding that is helping the people, and the people have asked for, they have, their voice has been heard, their voice has been heard locally in 20 meetings.
Sir, you're repeating yourself.
I'm allowed to. I have time. I believe there's a clock going. We have heard from the public. I feel at this point like some kind of defense attorney that is losing a case where the prosecution has no evidence whatsoever of wrongdoing. Where is your evidence of wrongdoing? This seems very much like a personal issue, and if you are acting out of personal feelings, if you are not, I don't know if you're judging Ms. Melanie Baldwin on her professionalism, I don't know if you're judging Mr. Pritchard on his professionalism, I don't know where this judgment is coming from, because the things that you're saying are not accurate. Where is it coming from? It seems very much like this is directly a personal issue, and if it is a personal issue, it is certainly an embarrassment to the city of York.
Can I answer? Will it go back?
Yes, of course.
So, what has counsel done? In October for our legislative meeting, I requested to you directly information on what other municipalities were doing. Your reply was duly noted. The reason why I requested that information...
I do your homework.
I'm talking. I'm not your child, don't yell at me. You're out of place. And he's, so we're not, I'm not going to be disrespected. In October, I requested to see what other municipalities were doing, and you said duly noted. The next day, or maybe the day after that, you called me and you said that your team was so busy that you could not get me information in regards to what other municipalities were doing, and I said to you, fine, I'll start looking myself. So I did. I looked at Tucson, Arizona, I looked at Rochester, New York, I looked at Detroit, I looked at the city of Lancaster, I looked at the city of Scranton, and those municipalities have strategic plans, clear timeframe of how they're using their funds. That's what I've been doing since that legislative meeting. I've talked to ARPA committee members to get their fill on the process, and when I'm hearing different information from those ARPA committee members, that becomes a concern for me, which I said in our last legislative meeting. So I'm not sitting here just twiddling my thumbs. It's not personal. I have a full-time job, I run a nonprofit organization that I don't get paid a dime for, I'm on city council, nothing personal with you. I believe that we can have a better way of using these funds, and as elected officials, when I request it, as city council, when I request that you not move forward or announce these organizations, it's for a reason, because it plays into the agenda of getting these people thinking that they're going to get funding and then turn these people against us, which it did not work for you, because people know each one of us on this council, they know our dedication to this city, and they know that we understand the problems that are in this city. What I have simply requested is that we come together as elected officials... What I have simply requested is that we come together as elected officials with some type of outside consultant to make sure that we're doing this the best way that we can, and to make sure we're not just getting funding out in this community and not being strategic about it. So have I been working absolutely? And I think that there's a better way to do it, and I am ready and willing to work
Anyone else from council?
Enough said.
One more time, let's do this thing quickly, huh?
Mr. Chair, I'm not going to shout at anybody. I think that the considerations put forth by the council member and duly approved and introduced as an amendment, they're worthy of support, to put it simply. I don't think that emotion, this is going to sound funny coming from me, but I don't think that emotion should necessarily drive your fiduciary duties. I understand the sense of urgency. We're not even going to go there. To question each other's values and intents, I'm not going to go there. But in terms of stewardship as a government body, I was impressed by the statement relayed today. I didn't go much by the rumors and conjecture. What was relayed today, I think, is very worthwhile, and I would hope that the mayor's administration would somehow find something to get in sync with the legislative branch of the city. A rubber stamp, it just shall not be. I do not sense that it's personal necessarily. Some things may be, some things will be. Convictions are strong. But I think that you should all meet at the table once more, yet again. There are very, very laudable perspectives and policy directions in both approaches. There's nothing wrong with this process, as heated as it may seem. I actually feel that it's a good thing. So do support the amendment.
Anyone else? All right, now we'll call the roll.
Okay, so we have Rivera?
No.
Abstain. Oh, okay, that's right. Okay. Washington? Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. And then motion carries. Next, we have final passage of bill number 61.
Introduce. Bill number 61, introduced by Sandy Walker at the November 30th meeting of council, an ordinance fixing the tax rate for all city purposes beginning January 2022, with the total amount being $18.97 on each $1,000 of assessed valuation.
Moot to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments by council?
No tax increase.
Anything from the public? Please call the roll.
Rivera?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ritter Dixon?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Nixon?
Yes. And that's it for the legislative session. Any final comments by council?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to thank the community and the, my council partners for allowing me to serve the community for the last five years. This is my final meeting, and I wish you all well. We worked hard to do what we could for our community. I am a member of this community, born and raised, and I will be here the rest of my life unless it's changed, and I will still be a part of the community. But community, thank you for choosing me, and thank you for allowing me to serve you.
Anyone else?
I guess I'll reply back to both of you, since this is, well, this, it might not be, but this is the last scheduled city council legislative meeting. So thank you both for your dedication to our community. We know that you both have had a lot going on personally, and so it's, it's hard at times to, to balance this. And so we appreciate your dedication and your service, not only during this term, but for the years that you have dedicated to the city. You have earned time to relax and enjoy. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. It has, it has truly been an honor for me to serve York for the last 12 years. This meeting is adjourned.